This is Saturday, February 20th, 2021. Welcome to the League of Women Voters Annual County Commission Meeting. We're delighted you've joined us this morning. And I just want to give you a bit of history about this morning's meeting. A little background, as part of its yearly programming, over the years, the League has attempted to regularly hold the annual Jefferson County Commission Meeting. Some years were a little better at it than other years. Last year, we had to cancel, unfortunately, but this year we're back. And to host meaningful discussions, we usually host this meeting over a breakfast banquet. This year, our commissioners, our time with our commissioners must be distanced physically. However, we hope that this won't diminish the candor and the discussion that's been so meaningful to us, the commissioners and the public. I want everyone to note this morning that we invited all the Jefferson County Commissioners, all five of them, to join us today. We're pleased that Jefferson County Commissioner Jane Tab accepted our invitation. Jane represents the Middleway District and has been a county commissioner, I think, Jane, you might correct me, since 2000 or right about then? Maybe a tad more. Your moderator today will be League member Dixie Dunn. She'll begin the program and about halfway through, she'll open the floor for your questions. Please type your questions in the chat feature and she will ask them and we'll be able to wrap up our program at about 11:30. So without further ado, I will send it to Dixie. Welcome, Dixie.
Great, thank you, Effie. And just a reminder that the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. And as Effie mentioned, we invited all five county commissioners to today's event and we are very pleased that Commissioner Tab accepted our invitation. Also, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the League of Women Voters website. And lastly, because we only have one guest speaker this morning, I asked that she engage in a more conversational style with us. Accordingly, I'll try to answer, try to ask open-ended questions. First of all, this is in regard to the budget. As you may know, many years ago, the League asked the county commission to hold a public workshop about how the county's budget is set every year. The commission did so and has faithfully held this same workshop every year since. It's called Budget 101. The League commends the county commission for faithfully conducting this important public service. For those of you who may have missed it, the most recent one was held on February 2nd, 2021. A link to this will be posted in the chat feature. Thank you, Commissioner Tab. And I believe you were a member of the county commission when we originally asked for this workshop. Any comments?
Yes, I believe I was. And I just want to correct something that Effie said earlier. This is my third term as a county commissioner. I did start in 2001, but I, in between there, I had a six-year leave of absence is what I call it before I lost a reelection bid and came back and won two more times. So I was off for a while. Now, yes, I believe I was on the commission when the League of Women Voters approached us to do, you know, the budget workshop. And it's always a good refresher for me even, and you know, sometimes laws can change that affect the budget, so we can take that and that can be updated as well as explaining the somewhat cumbersome levy rate and all those good things.
Okay, well, it's really a great service. And for those of you that have not had a chance to look at the budget, I would really encourage you to do so. It makes things a lot clearer and is very transparent with what the county commissioners are trying to do. This next question is in regards to the broadband issue. And in August 2019, the county commission created the Jefferson County Broadband Team and commissioned a study about the possibility of bringing broadband into Jefferson County. The study has been completed and its findings have been presented to the county commission and also is available for public viewing. A link is being posted in the chat feature now. The League has asked the county commission to hold a public workshop on the broadband study. To date, no such workshop has been scheduled. Jane, I mean Commissioner Tab?
Call me Jane, please. Call me Jane. I don't need title.
Okay, Jane, can you give us any insight as to why this has not happened yet?
Well, I think we have been busy putting out fires and recent, you know, we're still working on balancing the budget. We're very close. We also during working on the budget, we have Board of Equalization and Review. So those take up other days besides just working steadily through on the budget. I do think that's something I can put on the agenda once we are complete with our budget and have, you know, find a direction on how to proceed. I got to tell you, money's really tight for the commission, but I was pleased to hear on the broadband study that, you know, two school sites were identified as possible places to put cell towers. And if there could be a partnership with the school board, then I believe would be mutually beneficial. Of course, some folks don't like cell tower towers and I can, you know, their appearance. And I understand that too. So I think we all need to review the study in detail and find out how it can be implemented or parts of it implemented to better serve our county.
Well, as part of that, the study states that the county should not be in the internet business and should not compete with the private sector. With that being said, can you tell us if there have been any public facilities that have been interested in coming into the area and partnering with the county on this?
I have no knowledge of that. It's an interesting concept of perhaps, you know, put it out there more forcefully than just what's been presented to the commission. But there's been no initiative yet to take that approach.
Okay, and I'm just curious, I mean, hopefully with the weather this year, I know all over the country, some of our green energy has not actually worked. Where turbines have been frozen and of course, cell tower, not towers, but solar cells, yeah, have been covered in snow and of course, you know, they're not working. So hopefully with, I truly believe that out of every bad situation, something good always happens. And so because of the inconveniences, hopefully that we'll be better prepared, you know, going forward. Okay, then last year, this is in regard to the Open Meeting Act study. The League conducted a study of 12 county boards and commissions to see how these agencies are implementing the West Virginia Open Meeting Act. And a link to that study is being put up in the chat feature now. At the conclusion of that study, the League made a formal presentation to the commission suggesting several improvements which would help make county information more readily available to the public. Although the response was positive to date, it doesn't appear that the commission has instituted any of the proposed policies. Can you give us any insight as to why? And you may have already answered it with partly to them trying to, you know, get the budget balanced, but any comments on that?
Well, you know, the budget has been, you know, since the beginning of this year. What has happened has been the pandemic and we have had to take extraordinary measures with our employees and trying to make all our services available to the public. And we know there are absolutely some things you've got to do in person. And so, you know, there's, it's just been a challenge and we've had, you know, our E911 center, it was very difficult to keep that staffed. We can control people when they're working for us, but we can't control people when they're off, not in, you know, in a work situation. And so we've had staff come down with COVID and, you know, we could lose a whole shift on E911 and not have the staff we need. So I think we've been focused on that. You know, we were into, it's been, I know I'm kind of diversing, diverging from your question, but, you know, we've had to come up with a way to do totally virtual meetings. And now some folks want to go back to in-person and, you know, I have concerns with that. So, you know, I like the in-person meetings the best. But, you know, we will perhaps send us a reminder and we can go back to your suggestions and see. But a lot of it involves the websites and the information is there, but I at times have difficulty locating it. So I think, you know, we could, we don't have the money to hire somebody to rework the website. But the information is there, it's just sometimes I feel difficult to find.
Right, well, outside of suggesting a policy that the commission should institute to assist their boards and commissions, the study also touched upon the relationship between the county and the state. State agencies do not always communicate with local officials about upcoming projects or policy decisions. Any comment or, you know, suggestions on this?
That's a good point because a lot of times we don't know about it until it's happening in our county. You just have to be, I don't think we can change the state approach at this point or I don't know the right person to talk to or the right people. That's a tough nut to crack. You just, you know, I had a citizen email me and just felt like the commission, instead of waiting to read the minutes, she wanted a recap of the commission meeting done by staff. Well, that's, that's really not the official record and it puts the staff person in an interpretive mode, which can cause more trouble. And I told her to be an involved citizen, it takes an effort. You've, you know, whether you approve of a newspaper article or not, it does give you some basic information on what's going on. And, you know, it takes time and energy to be involved, as you all well know.
Yep, definitely. Well, and if the state people aren't communicating with the local officials, it makes it a little difficult. The local commissions and board are also part of a statewide system administered by a state agency like the Board of Health and the Board of Education. A suggestion was made that the responsible state agency provides some forms or templates for agendas and websites that would make all 55 counties more uniform. Your comments on this plea? And then in lieu of the state providing the support, is there anything the county could do to support these agencies in our county?
You know, these organizations make, have their own bylaws and their own boards. You can make suggestions directly to them. I don't know how it will trickle down from the state and make it uniform across all counties. I, I don't have the answer to that one.
Okay. One of the questions from our listeners is what development projects are on the horizon for the county?
Well, I know there's a huge development, housing development, you know, going on in the Home Depot area. We've got a couple, we have one rezoning request that we're going to have a hearing on. And the big one are the solar text, the solar facility text amendments. That has my attention. I'm glad the planning commission is reexamining it, reexamining it. It, this first project encompasses a significant amount of acreage. And I want safeguards so that in 30 years, we don't have a wasteland. I understand the viewpoint of, yes. I won't be around in 30 years, don't think so anyway. And I don't, you know, this is going to be in county zoned land. And so the county will be responsible for any cleanup that if it's not done properly. And I, I just, you know, I understand from the landowner's perspective that it is another way to generate income. And especially for those reaching retirement age, I absolutely understand that. But I think it has to be done with safeguards to protect the land. I mean, I'm a farmer, I'm on the farmland protection board, that's where my heart is. And, you know, it's got to be done right and to protect all neighboring properties, whether they contain houses or not, because in the future they may. You know, I really would like to see the solar text amendments have a conditional use process. I believe there would be greater opportunity to initiate a request conditions because each property is going to be pretty unique with how big the chunks of ground covered in the projects. So that's why I am on that. Cautiously optimistic, we'll get something better.
Okay, in regards to open meetings, is it possible that the agenda items have some background material on some of the issues for the public to review?
Well, you know, there was one specifically on this Thursday that, you know, did not have the background for the community, the Second Amendment Sanctuary State Proclamation. And, you know, I was emailed that, I believe, the day before the meeting. And I don't think something like that should, it should have been included in the packet. So everybody had a chance to see it beforehand. I do best seeing things, thinking on it and not reacting, you know, knee-jerk reactions is what I call it, but. And I think the public deserves that as much as we can, but there are always, somebody wants to add something to their agenda item or, you know, I do think the staff does as well as they can with what information has been sent to them. But, and when, you know, as president, I would approve the agenda. But, you know, you're supposed to have your agenda items and by close of business on Thursday, the staff assembles all the information and, and the, and over the weekend, the president, you know, either approves or amends the agenda, but you don't always know at that point whether all the information that would be useful has been submitted. Plus, some people, you know, supply a lot of their information verbally.
Okay, well, speaking of the county commissioner, county commission, is there a way that citizens can interact better with the county commission? And it seems like there's not a lot of opportunity and some county commissioners are not responsive to the constituents that they represent.
I can only speak for myself. I encourage everyone, if they, something on the agenda concerns them or, you know, they want to see it happen, do, you know, submit your public comment, either during the meeting, you know, the first thing in the meeting or written, email it to the commission or all our, and you all know all our emails. I can't make other commissioners respond to emails and I don't respond to every single email either. But when somebody has, needs some answers, I try to find them for them.
Thank you. By, this kind of goes back to what we've discussed before, but by not including background material in the agenda, does that constitute an open meeting violation?
No, I don't believe it does. Some may, some may disagree, but I do think that technically, even without the background information, we're following the letter of the law, which basically requires you post it on the door of the courthouse. I mean, there's, it's pretty minimal.
Right, right, thank you. Okay, and I guess, and again, because going back to the broadband, we've touched on some of this. But do we have any idea, again, if we have somebody partnering with us, you know? And do we have any idea what cost to the county would be for those services?
No, we have not looked at it in depth ourselves. We just received the study and had the high points given to us. So, you know, it is something, once the budget is finalized, I will put on the agenda so we can figure out our next steps.
Okay, here's, here's one, I love this. Thank you, Jane, for joining this meeting, lone warrior woman. We love you and let us know what support we can give you. So we definitely do appreciate. And, and that's why we wanted to do this in a conversational way. We don't want to, you know, put you on the spot and have you feel like you're being attacked and everything. So thank you for, for coming out with us. And somebody is asking to, what is the status of the new governmental building study?
Well, it's gone nowhere because we, we, we haven't been able to tackle that with the pandemic and reduced, you know, tax income and so forth. That, that's not, that's kind of fallen off the radar at the moment. I know it's something we have to work on and to find a funding mechanism because our buildings are very costly to maintain. I mean, I love that historic courthouse, but it costs a lot. We did finally get the windows redone, so that's important.
Also, someone's wanting to know how to get on the Jefferson County Commission agenda.
There is an agenda request form that's on the website. And if you can't find it, you can call the office and get staff to send you a link or, you know, show, you can come in and pick up the paperwork. It's this pretty simple form. But, and then that should be submitted to be in the office by Thursday at 5 o'clock before the proceeding, so it's almost, it is a week before the meeting, so.
And is there any, I mean, can the Jefferson County Commission refuse to put you on the agenda?
Yes, with valid reason. I had somebody, when I was president, the only time I did not let somebody present, present at a meeting, had several items and he was a board member. And I suspected that the board did not know what this agenda item was. So I contacted the board and they said, that's, that's, he is not representing us. So we pulled the item from the agenda.
Okay, thank you. And can you highlight the key issues of the budget from your point of view?
Well, we, we sort of hope we have the budget balanced, but it's been, it's not been fun. You know, as always, emergency services is our biggest headache and I am committed to find a new way to fund them. What we're doing is not working, it will not work in the future. We've had to cut the fire department funding. ESAA asked for seven new staff members and I think we only did three, three or four. You know, that we, sheriff asked for new positions, they were not granted. So, you know, we did, we were able to fund community ministries for $20,000 because we think they're doing some very important work. They always do important work, but with this pandemic, it's especially critical. CASA, that court-appointed special advocate, we funded them some additional, we gave them something, I think, midterm or mid fiscal year last fall. But we gave them more, another $5,000 this year because they do such important work. And unfortunately, there's more need. It's just increasing, plus I think pandemic has increased, increased the stress on all families. We did also, for the first time, fund an initiative by, for the senior center in Ranson for their meal deliveries. They're, you know, they're not having any activities at the civic center. And so there, a lot of folks came in for meals, which was good for socialization. But they, we help, are helping pay with, fund some of the meals and the delivery service, which takes, you know, additional staff. So it was, it's a pretty lean budget because we've had reduced revenue, just like most of our citizens, if they're operating a business. And, you know, a lot of jobs have been cut. So, well, also something I was not happy with that was cut was the merit increase in COLA for our employees. And that's something I think we need to do, if at all possible, just so we can keep our salaries current to market demand. You can have significant turnover when you don't keep up with the wage scale. So I'm hoping, you know, that we can do something more for our employees because I know we make unpopular decisions at times and our employees face the wrath of our citizens when those are implemented. So sometimes it's a very thankless job, so I appreciate all their hard work.
Well, has Jefferson County received any federal COVID money?
Yes, our finance director, Michelle Gordon, is excellent. We've been reimbursed, but it still does not replace the lost tax revenue. It helps cover some of our extra expenses and so forth. You know, but it does not refill our tax coffers. You know, the CVB is struggling. I mean, you know, how many hotels and motels are collecting their tax? It's, it's just tough.
Well, and how can the League of Women Voters best interact with the county commission?
Well, it's unfortunate other commissioners have not participated today because I think this is a good opportunity for us all to understand what is important to you. I, I don't know a better way. Unless you want to make a presentation at, you know, the county commission or something like that. But at this point, or, you know, be very persistent in contacting all commissioners, whether they respond or not. They usually read, I hope they read all their emails.
Okay, okay, well, Dixie Dunn may be a dirty word in their vocabulary, so. At least I'll know the name Dixie Dunn, but thank you for that, thank you for that. Now, you're talking about, you've been talking about, you know, trying to balance the budget. Will there be a public hearing on that and do you have any idea when that will be?
No, we're not totally, we haven't, the commission, we think we're balanced and, you know, we've, we've got, we might have a No, we're not totally, we haven't, the commission, we think we're balanced and, you know, we've, we've got, we might have some tech, you know, small adjustments that we need to make. There is a required public hearing for the budget. So, you know, and we can't, the levy rate can't be increased. We are at our max levy rate. So, you know, it's only if the value of your property goes up, will you have increased taxes. And there has been increase, we've been, gone through border review and equalization with the assessor. And there has been increased values in property. As you may or may not know, lots of folks are moving to Jefferson County to get out of the metro area. They want their space. I can't blame them. I live on a farm. I like my space too. So, you know, but, but there's been a lot of property transfers. And of course, some of that money goes to the farmland protection board. So we get our monthly update on that number and it's definitely increasing.
Okay. What are your thoughts on some of the proposals that the state, at the state level to eliminate personal income taxes? And if eliminated, how would that affect Jefferson County?
I, I don't think they can. This is just my personal viewpoint. I don't think they can do it. I mean, I legally, yes. But budget wise, no. I don't know where they're going to find the money to replace that. I just don't see how that's going to happen. We do get a few, you know, that would impact D O H here locally, less state dollars. And I'm sure there's a lot of trickle down effect that would affect us if, you know, those dollars aren't replaced somehow within the budget.
Okay. Is there anything like, you know, for senior citizens on a fixed income and everything? I mean, like, how are the taxes based on, on situations like that?
It, it's not, the taxes are not based on that. They're based on the market value of the land and property you own. There is the, you lived in a house so long, what is that one called? Just went over my head. Homestead.
Homestead.
Yeah, yeah. Coming, it's coming. Yeah, that you can get a discount with that if you've owned your properties for a certain amount of years. But that's the only variable, you know, any sort of relief on tax, taxes. Now, you know, you all have the opportunity to appeal your tax assessment. But you've got to come to the commission with real facts and figures of comparable property, you know, to show that yours has been overvalued. It can't be, well, you know, my house doesn't have great windows or walled wall carpeting or whatever, you know, granite countertops. It's got to be a lot, lot bigger, bigger picture than that.
Okay. And can you comment on the status of impact fees?
Well, that was discussed at Thursday's meeting and some commissioners feel it is not accurate. But that's a, and even one commissioner wants to, you know, get, sue the firm that prepared it because he doesn't feel it's accurate. Get our money back. I don't think we'll be able to pursue that, or should we? I just think we need to look at it again. Some commissioners have said they are not going to raise the impact fees. I don't think the study means we have to raise impact fees. We could keep them the same, but I think there's more discussion ahead and legal, I'm sure, will provide us some guidance of some ramifications, one way or the other, of how we, if we accept the study or if we change the impact fees. Not sure where this is going to go.
Okay. Well, you also, you mentioned that people are moving out of the metro area and people do this to get away from city life. Yet, we, you know, some people feel that we are not protecting our small town life. Why are we not concentrating on expanding our tourism, building up Charlestown versus bringing in big companies into our county, ruining the landscape and hurting the historic value?
Well, I mean, you know, we have the J C B A that, you know, attempts to attract business to Jefferson County. I think if you want to see the villages and so forth protected, we do have a zoning ordinance that does a lot of that. We did loosen up some of the restrictions on villages just so there could be viable small businesses within the village. If you have suggestions for changes that would, you know, as far as planning and zoning, that you feel would do what you stated, then you can certainly bring them forward and we can consider them.
Okay. The county has a number of legal matters on its agenda. Many go into executive session. Have you seen an increase in litigation during your tenure? Is this a significant or increased cost? Does the county regularly use outside counsel to augment Nathan Cochran? You know, can you comment on that?
Yes. Nathan has, Mr. Cochran has, keeps his list on the county commission on the agenda. And I know it's hard to know what is going to be spoken, you know, that, what we will work on or he will offer comments on or we're going to go in executive session. But he does that. So if he gets an update on a case, he can inform us or inform the public of what's happening. You know, we're very specific when we go into executive session about what agenda items from Nathan's list we are speaking about. And yes, we do hire outside counsel. At times, we hired outside counsel for guidance and legal counsel on the pilot agreement when we were threatened with a suit from Rockwell. We've done it on E E O C items. And I know the list looks long, but really there's only two or three things that are active. Or, you know, we just, they're a long term case and we just get updates. So I don't think there's an increase, but at times, Mr. Cochran is overloaded because he also deals with planning and zoning and the board of review. So he carries a heavy workload. So we, we, you know, we always approve any outside counsel that we hire.
Thank you. Are you able to comment on the discussion in January regarding the removal of school board members?
All I say is, I don't agree. I think it was foolish. It's a foolish approach to any problem.
Okay. And I'm a little ignorant on this. What was the reason that they were wanting some school board members removed?
Apparently, I believe they did not like the way the two employees were treated, that the social media posts of them participating in the action.
Right.
Yeah. And I, I feel the school board followed their procedure. You know, they have some strict guidance on employees. And if you get arrested and convicted for drunk driving, you're not an employee of the school board. So they have to, there was a grievance filed. You have to, they have to file up, follow up and go through a procedure for every grievance filed with them.
Okay. And then why are we not utilizing larger facilities for early voting such as the Ranson Civic Center or Lee Town Fairgrounds? The courthouse was a tight fit last October and it seemed difficult to observe COVID regulations. And they appreciate your input on this matter.
We are looking at an option, a second early voting possibility, but that has a significant cost to it. And I don't know if we can do that. It looked like it was cramped at the courthouse and that was because we, and the lines were very long. But one reason is we could not have as many voting booths within the vote, in, within the room because of COVID. And then the lines were spread out because of COVID. And actually, the numbers tell us that there were not as many early voters as there had been in the previous year, in the previous election. So, well, it looked like more. It definitely did because I drove in and checked for a couple of days and, you know, found some folks that were, you know, using walkers or having trouble standing and then, you know, go find a bailiff to see if they could get them moved up on the line. But actually, there were not as many, and it was a slower process because there's fewer voting booths available because of COVID. But we would have to, you know, double our equipment and and double the amount of employee, well, employees or that we hire, you know, part time, that's it helped. So it's not an inexpensive approach. Not saying I'm against it. We have to wait for the Republican and executive committees to agree on the location. So we shall see. But we have staff, our staff has looked at the numbers.
Okay, thank you. And, and what are your legislative goals for 2021?
Well, I you say legislative and I don't feel like I'm in a legislative position. It's more like policy for the county. I am, you know, very concerned about the solar text amendments. So I'm keeping a steady eye on that and, you know, was disappointed with the P S E ruling. I'm personally also watching the developments with the Rockwell stormwater permits and so forth. So we have some very dedicated citizens working on those issues. And another focus for me will be finding a, a new way to deliver or funding emergency services. We can't keep on going down the path that we're going. And it's going to take some hard work and a lot of people are involved. So I think those are three big ones. Don't have any easy answers right now.
Right, right. Okay, here we go. You've already answered the legislative goals and we totally understand the county commissioners that you put in a lot of time and we truly appreciate it. Are the county commissioners paid enough for their considerable time or should it be a full time renumeration?
I, I think they're paid enough, but, you know, and it can absolutely be a full time job. So it's what you make out of it. Each individual, you, you know, as we have had commissioners that have full time, but regular jobs and they have managed very well. And, you know, I'm not in that position now, especially since we sold our milk cows. I'm not on the milking crew, but I'm on the paperwork crew now. But I, I think it's, you know, a lot of it depends on the individual. So, and I don't know how you would implement a full time, making it full time.
Right, right. Okay. Also, during the last meeting, the resolution on the Second Amendment sanctuary was presented. There were a lot of legal items on it. Was everyone able to review this, particularly the Jefferson County attorney?
To my knowledge, it had not been reviewed by our legal counsel. And, you know, we already are, you know, you want to use a term of sanctuary or gun, gun rights, you know, I own my own rifle, you know, I, my father, I helped him make bullets and had got my first rifle, just like my brothers at the age of 12. So, but I just thought that was, and the reason I abstained, I just thought it was a lot of political grandstanding. And I just didn't think it was productive to have a conversation at that point.
Okay. So someone's wanting to know, what is the commissioner pay now? And, and they thought it was in line with a full time salary for Jefferson County.
Well, I, I think, I think so. I think it's generous, but, you know, I've worked on farm wages, so maybe it's not comparable. But I think for a part time job, it is generous. You, but you have to realize it's a different type of job than just the whatever a regular job is anymore. You know, you, you can take a lot of arrows when you voice your opinion and it's not popular for whatever reason, or it's not popular with your fellow commissioners and so forth. So there, there's no way to compensate for some of that. You just got to have a very tough skin.
Yeah, I, I think it's difficult when you are in the pub and you do represent the public. It is difficult to be the good guy all the time. And I really admire our commissioners and all of our politicians who take that role. It is, I'm sure, not a very easy one.
Well, and additionally, I didn't mention this, it can affect families, our relatives. I mean, it's just, sometimes there's a ripple effect and, and that's, that's hard to see.
Definitely. Is the Jefferson County Commission going to work with the R N C and the D N C of Jefferson County to try to look for a second voting location in Jefferson County for early voting? Or has this been tabled?
No, we, at our last meeting, we received the numbers for having a second early voting. And to our knowledge, the both executive boards are looking for a location. But we haven't heard that, we have not heard the results of that. What location is mutually agreeable to both the Republican and Democratic executive committees?
Okay. And this is just a notice to everyone in regards to the salaries for the county commissioners. It is in the 2022 budget documents. So be sure, you know, and look at that. And then some people are not taking benefits just because they're veterans, et cetera. So that is a cost savings to the county as well. Are there any more? It looks like we're winding down on our questions. Are there any additional questions out there? For Jane?
This is my cat.
We need to introduce your cat. So.
This is Annie.
Hi, Annie. Let's see. Okay. Mary Sell is wanting to know, please tell us about Farm to Fork.
Well, that's not a county commission function. I'm not sure in what capacity I do have my own, well, haven't used it much catering business that's called, based on the farm that I do catering meals with using local food products. So, that's kind of not possible right now to do anything.
I, I know, I, I know. It's really difficult. It's going to be interesting to find out what the new normal is going to be going forward, whether it's work or just, you know, life, life in general. It's going to be interesting to find out what the new normal is going to be going forward, whether it's work or just, you know, life, life in general.
Well, just talking about work, my daughter in law, you know, has a job, very grateful for it. And she works from home, but unfortunately, it is now not a nine to five job. She has, you know, Zoom meetings in the evening and sometimes early morning. And as you all know, that's difficult when you have kids. And then, if depending on your choice of education, you might have to help them with their schoolwork, so. It's challenging right now.
Definitely. And you mentioned that, you know, you had been on the county commission for a while and then due to. Election turnout, you took a hiatus for a while and then you decided to come back. What, what made you decide to come back?
I, I just have a passion for Jefferson County and I feel I have. You know, a viewpoint, I, I see myself as a moderate. Some people may not see that. And maybe I'm not on some issues, I'm pretty passionate about some, my, you know, issues that are. But I'm, I'm not somebody that is a party politician or, and I have never had any. Any urge to go beyond the county commission. I don't want to be a delegate or senator or anything else. I just want to make Jefferson County where I live and where, you know. Let's see, three of my, well. Two of my grand, two of my children live with their families. I have another son in Winchester, he hopes to move to this area with his kids. It's important to me to make it the best it can be.
Definitely. Is the commission aware of the League of Women's Voters' support for changes to election law in light of the Harper Ferry experience?
No, I'm not, I'm not, if there's something specific that you are promoting, I'm not aware of that. So what are you promoting?
Okay, Effie, I'm going to ask you to jump in on that. Can you comment on that?
I think there are probably others better suited than I.
Okay. Can you?
This is Lynn, I can comment.
Okay.
There's two key changes that we're working with the state delegation for and our delegates have supported. One is to. Get the courts involved earlier so that the decision can be made much more quickly. That, that's one of the key things, to cut down the, the, the time of uncertainty as it goes through all the various permutations. So the league is supporting a quicker reaction and response.
Right.
Yeah. Yes, if I could add to that, one of the ways to.
Oh, there's Betsy.
Yeah.
She's the queen of this.
No, you did great, you did great. But I think what would affect the commission most directly is that instead of serving as a tribunal. If the, there is an election contest, it would go to the court instead. So that would speed up the process and the thought is that the, often, at least in the, the Harper's Ferry case. The tribunal was the town council, was the board that counted the votes.
You're muted.
Betsy, unmute yourself.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. What I, what I was saying was that the reason the process would be sped up. Is because the commission would be taken out of the election contest. If there were an election contest, it would go directly to the courts instead of a tribunal. Whose members are the commission. So that there wouldn't be that, that possible conflict of interest.
Right. That, that sounds like that would definitely be an improvement because I was somewhat shocked at how long. You know, the process took to get those ballots counted and sort out all the issues of that election.
Right.
Rebecca, would you be so kind and unmute yourself and tell Jane what you posted to me? Rebecca, do you hear me? Rebecca Fibbs? Becky?
Okay. Here we go. Hi, hi, coming in. Okay, hi. Can, can you hear me now, folks?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I just said. I just said, Jane. You're the only hope for maintaining the rural beauty of. Of Jefferson County. And I don't think I'm alone in saying that and you're, you're never not appreciated and please, please carry on.
Well, thank you, thank you, I, I appreciate that, I really do. Because, you know, with, with the current commission, you know, they. They have not experienced, I don't believe, the rural lifestyle to the degree I have. And so it's hard for them to understand where I'm coming from.
Yeah, it's. Well, that's it. It's, we, we cherish what we have and we, you don't know what you've got till it's gone sometimes, but I hope. I hope you can carry on.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like our, that's pretty much the end of all of our questions. And Jane, again, we want to say thank you for attending and. Hopefully, I can say this on behalf of the League of Women Voters. We truly appreciate your support for the league and for what you, for what you do for the county. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Effie.
Thank you, Dixie. Thank you, everybody, for attending this morning and thank you especially to Jane Tab. Just on a personal note, Jane, I appreciate it you, oh, I'm going to say. In 2001, when after the legislature finally passed our Farmland Protection Act. It was your brainchild, actually, it was genius for some of the transfer tax to go to. The Farmland Protection Board and that's enabled that body to be successful in purchasing the farmland easements on lots of beautiful properties. So it's speaking to Rebecca's point about the rural nature of the county. It will forever be saved on those farms and parcels of property in part because of your genius of coming up with that funding mechanism. That when we initially drafted the bill, we didn't necessarily have that particular funding provision. So thank you, kudos to you on that one. Thank you, everybody, I appreciate and I hope, I, I mean, truly, raise your hands if you learned something today about the methodology of how the county. Yes, that's what the League of Women Voters does. If you really want to understand at the very basic, helping people to understand the processes and procedures of their government. So that they can become more active. You know, it doesn't, as Jane says, being active takes a lot of hard work. You need to read these agendas, you need to read those minutes. They're not going to come knocking on your door and say, oh, did you know we're going to have a meeting here at the county commission about cell towers or farm property? You need to call, you need to look on the websites and you need to participate. Thank you to Jane for helping us understand that. Good night, good day, have a good day, everybody. Bye bye.